Oh. And she was still on the couch. I'm getting a little cold. And I had hot hair up in the middle. And I had John Zoll, she was sleeping. So we just did a few things. And we're thinking about here a few days earlier. We were having that. Yeah. Hope store. And you know. So we didn't use it. Probably just out. It's not too far. And then we got, we got another.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Those are.
I'm going to say this. See. He says he's not going to.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Okay. Yeah. Just a great young man. He's glad. He's getting very, very calm later.
Yeah. First year, so. That's two years. He's still. He's last year for the career.
Uh, we need twenty sixteen. Sixteen.
Well, yes, wait. Thank you.
Yeah. Wait. Did he like?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere this month.
My career.
That house has worn me out.
I always have those thoughts. Aren't you coming? Like I have a constant, I always think, oh, do you want to do a lot of looking around? But actually, if you want to.
Yeah.
I wasn't playing it. Oh, I play it.
Sure.
Oh.
Tell him to play keep that quick.
I don't.
That's crazy.
I'm trying to play it.
It's like. They're pulling me out of the light now. Yeah, it's all the way out. Yes, for some, I look like a gentleman. You're free, ladies. Are giving me eyes. No.
No. Always important, I think. People talk. Okay. It turns me cranky.
He's, he's, he's burning away.
Is he over there?
Yes.
Yes.
Princess, the thing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Phyllis.
Absolutely.
Do Bill not want to sit by David?
I don't know. He may not have.
He go on that screen there.
Ooh, it's chilly in here.
Maybe he don't want to sit by you?
Hello, Arnold.
Hello, Dave.
Welcome. Wonderful work. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good lady, where would you like me to sit? Look there. Second. All right, ready? Ready. Let's see what this is. Amy. Let's see what this is. I don't know. I don't know.
You, that's what I'm expecting.
I think I'll do this. Are you supposed to?
No.
Yeah, it's your problem.
He's drunk.
Good.
I hope he's walking out of here.
He's holding air. He's been with the side of the big computer. They will be sitting down.
Sure.
Okay, it's time to call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand for prayer and pledge allegiance, please. Let us pray. Dear gracious heavenly father, we thank for this day and all the many blessings. Will we thank you once again for giving us opportunity to serve this community, Lord? We pray we do everything in accordance to thy will. We pray for our country, the men and women that serve, especially the ones on foreign soil. They continue to, you continue to put thy hand around them, bring them back home safely. Now, we know. We pray for the sick, especially the ones that we know, that you restore them back. They're much wanted, help, Lord, be thy will. We ask you to guide us to make all the decisions all in accordance with thy will. Forgive us our sins. Christ name be praised. Amen. All right, Ray, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just as a rock.
Thank you, Ray. Roll call, Ms. Phyllis.
Alderman, Bud.
Aiden.
Alderman, Dale.
Great.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
President.
Alderman, Helfer.
President.
Alderman, Langford. Alderman, Mender.
President.
Alderman, Langford.
Our president and Alderman Langford, but I think he will be here. He said he was just running a little bit late, so. Uh, going to welcome Mr. Bill Linder back to the board. He's already had one meeting, but welcome him back and also welcome Mr. Alderman Brustell to the board. Welcome. Glad to have him here. All right, everyone's had an opportunity to look at the minutes and the motion to approve the minutes. Pass them to me, please.
Question.
Motion made.
Question? Please. Uh, correction. It was Mr. Robert McDaniel that had the complaint about the, oh, it's not.
Oh, it does say.
Not Robert or not?
Yeah, we will make the correction.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes. We'll make the correction. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Uh, so there's a motion by Alderman Brustell, second by Alderman John Cleff, with those corrections being discussed. All four of the motion. Let it know when it's saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed. Uh, additions or releases to the agenda. I do have several to add to the agenda as number ten item. Uh, we can add, please, the Vermeer Heartland Incorporated, which is a chipper purchase of sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, as number eleven, add LPD report, Ray Smith. Uh, also number twelve, add some lawnmower bids. And then we have public comments after that.
Motion to approve those four issues.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, is there a second?
How's that?
Second, Alderman Linder. In discussion. All four of the motion, let it know when it's saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion passed. All right, so we will add them to the agenda. We don't have any old business, under new business. Uh, we have downtown revitalization with Mr. Ray Evans, and I think followed up on his counter.
Good evening, folks, and especially good to see you, Bill and Bruce, on the Lord Mayor Alden. I want to give you an update on, let's see, on four grants this evening. The first being the T-Dot Multimodal Access Grant. Recall that that is the project that will reconstruct and build new sidewalks along East Main and East Broad from Square down to First National Bank. That's been, this has been a long and arduous process. Uh, partially because T-Dot is grossly under stress right now, and that's just as simple as I can put it. Uh, our, uh, our consultant has submitted final construction documents. The final comments on those construction documents were sent back to the consultant about two and a half weeks ago. Uh, those are relatively mild. Uh, we expect that the consultant can respond to those in the next two weeks, and then we submit to T-Dot. We're about to get into a not so favorable time to bid construction projects and, and construct, construction prices. So I'm, uh, I'm thinking that probably, even if we got approval of construction documents next month, I would still probably recommend that we wait until maybe mid-March to actually bid the project. My experience is that if you bid a project in between T-Dot bid lettings, you'll get much better bids than if you bid at the same time T-Dot is, is bidding otherwise. Contractors that do, that are not successful on the, on the T-Dot bid letting are hungry, and if you're, if you're tight for a couple of weeks after a T-Dot bid letting, usually you'll get better prices. So that's, uh, we'll see how that goes, but, but I expect to have, I hope to have, not expect, I hope to have T-Dot approval of our construction documents and, and notice preceding bidding sometime in the next forty-five days. The next project is our T-Dot Transportation Alternatives Program project, and that is to totally revamp and renovate the grounds of the courthouse lawn. Uh, first step in any T-Dot project is what's, is called an equal process. It's the environmental process. We have gone through and have approval on five of the six items within that, within that category. Our historical architecture historian has submitted an excellent report to T-Dot on historical items around the courthouse square, courthouse itself, which is one of the final requirement for the environmental phase. Uh, that has been submitted. Uh, we expect a pretty quick review by T-Dot on that, and we expect that they will release our consultants to start designing in the next thirty days. Uh, this report by this historical, architectural historical consultant, same person gave a report for us in two thousand nineteen. This report is multiple times better than the report that they did previously. Same, exact same consultant, but this time we walk them around and show them things, and we talk to them, set two or three hours. Uh, as a result, the, uh, the building that is, the Gohan Building on the corner of the square where Key Place is now, this consultant believes that that building is eligible for registration on the national register for historical places. So, uh, we have reached out, or are reaching out to the property owner to see if they would, um, want to, uh, would allow someone to nominate that building for, for the national register. We're also doing some homework prior to that to make sure that there's no encumbrances on, on the building and the property owner, if in fact it's, it's placed on the national register. Uh, as one of, the courthouse is also eligible. We think that the audition studio, uh, on East Main is also eligible for the national register. Uh, recall that, that the city was awarded about two months ago, a Appalachian Regional Commission grant for half a million dollars to reconstruct South Church Street. Uh, we are awaiting a contract from the state to proceed with their, their design elements of that project. The first thing that we will do in that process, once T-Dot gives us, we have a contract and T-Dot allows us to proceed, is to bring the consultant to town. Uh, we want to have a public meeting with all the property owners and the tenants along South Church Street, as well as anyone else who would want to attend, to give input to us and to the consultant as to specifics of what that project should, should look like. Uh, so we will, I guess, is that's going to be November. Uh, most likely, could be in October, but probably will be in November. So also recall that we awarded three facade improvement grants, twelve thousand five hundred dollars a piece earlier in the year. Uh, one to Bruce L and the Coopers for the storefront restoration of one oh three East Quarter Square. You've not have seen that building yet, just looks phenomenal. It's just, it amazes me that, that this community has a building that, that looks fabulous. Uh, then we also awarded a grant to Warren Ryder for building on the corner of South Church and Cedar. Uh, he has done a phenomenal job in, in storing that storefront, but not only that, in attracting a phenomenal business on the first floor and building four phenomenal Airbnbs on the second floor. Uh, the third grant that we awarded was to Lindsay and Buck Walker, and they have also done just an outstanding job on improving their two buildings. Uh, Lindsay is awaiting a delivery for cannabis, and she's, she's delivered and installed, and she's going to apply for reimbursement. We, we've reimbursed two of the, the three thus far. Uh, and, and if you haven't gone there, please, it, it's, it is, it is outstanding. As a result, the new owners of the Enterprise Building have now restored, at their own expense, have now restored their, uh, and upgraded their storefronts, so, um, it just puts a smile on my face, and I hope it does on, on yours as well. Uh, recall that we were awarded a dog park grant, uh, also earlier in the year. We are trying to schedule a check ceremony probably before the end of September. I will, I'm in communication with the folks that are trying to arrange that, and as soon as we know the date and time, we'll let you all know, and then we'll also, through the chamber and through social media, we'll let the public know, and hopefully we'll get a really good turnout for that, that check ceremony. Lastly, uh, the, the committee is working on a two thousand two, two thousand, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget for all of the state share, uh, sales tax revenues, uh, that we hope to present to you at your, at your October meeting. Uh, we're, we're learning along the way. We, we hope to have, uh, by the end of this month, we hope to have received a two thousand twenty-two application, and that will, we have a balance in, in the account now of around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we'll use that amount in the, the, uh, reimbursements that we get from the state at the end of September to establish the budget and move forward. We hope to have that budget for you all to approve at your October meeting. Questions? Thank you.
Good job. Lots going on. So, uh, also, uh, during our last downtown revitalization committee, uh, meeting, uh, we had a, uh, uh, I, I think, uh, in your packet, you will see that, uh, Mr. Evans, uh, last day serving as chairman, uh, of the downtown revitalization committee is October fifteenth. Uh, so a couple of things that, uh, that came out of that DRC meeting is, one, uh, to approve, uh, Mr. Gene Gant to be chairman of the downtown revitalization committee. Okay? Uh, and, uh, so I, I would, as recommended by the downtown revitalization committee, Mr. Gant's here. Uh, he said he'd take the same pay, pray God, nothing, but, uh, I'll go outside. Gene, I look forward to working with him. He will do an excellent job, so I just need to entertain a motion to accept Ray's resignation and to have Mr. Gant be chairman of the downtown revitalization committee.
I thought it would approve.
Motion made by Alderman Langford, second by, second by Alderman Cleff, in discussion. All four of the motion, let it know when it's saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Second, uh, DRC, uh, uh, wanted to enter into an agreement with Mr. Ray Evans, uh, to take, as a consultant, uh, will take care of all of our T-Dot, uh, engineer, any capital projects, uh, that will be going on downtown Livingston, in downtown Eric, in exchange for two thousand dollars a month. Uh, of course, I think everyone knows, Mr. Evans is a fast engineer betrayed, uh, and will do us a good job, and, uh, will be there to supervise, uh, the engineers, the inspectors, and, uh, things of that nature, so. Uh, that was also approved by the downtown revitalization committee. Just need to get approved.
Move to the per.
Motion made, Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
How's that?
Second by Alderman Bill Linder, in discussion.
Is it two thousand dollars a month?
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, yeah. Uh, and also, uh, Mr. Rager is looking at the agreement, and we'll sit down with Mr. Evans and get everything ironed out, but I think that might be a problem.
No, the agreement in substance is just fine. We had a couple of tweets that we shared with the mayor, and we'll get the gentleman and get that hammered out for you.
Yeah, but, uh, this is, so we've got a motion, second, uh, any more discussion? Got a roll call, Ms. Phyllis.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Helfer.
Yes.
Alderman Langford.
No.
Alderman Mender.
Yes.
Alderman Cleff.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, welcome aboard, Ray, with you, with, uh, Mr. Rager, and get all the documents, uh, up there, sign. Uh, Mr. Kenford, do you have anything to add under downtown?
Okay.
Okay. If not, we'll go on to item number two, carry back Mr. Bonner Wright. Come on up, Ms. Wright.
Thank you for having me here.
Is pressure button there?
It's all right.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Lots on.
All right.
Uh, thank you for having me here. Before I get started, as to why I'm here, I did want to say you all deserve a pat on the back. I want you all to know that Livingston is being noticed, not just here, but around. I travel a lot, so I know you're being looked at for your part, revitalization of downtown, um, places to go eat and shop, so know that you're doing a good job, so. I wanted to let you know that. I know you probably don't hear that enough, so. Uh, but I am the one up as Air Evac Lightning, um, Air McAir Network, is who actually work for, uh, part of Global Medical Response. Um, you probably know as lovely here as either Air Evac operationally, Livestar or Live Force, or the medical helicopters company that comes in here and flies you in an emergency situation. Uh, my job at the company, though, is membership. Some of you may be aware of that part of the company, and some of you may not be, but membership protects family and finances. Uh, I do want to say you do not have to be a member to fly with us. We do not ask that question, but there are a few important factors of membership. Uh, as I said, it does protect families and their finances by covering any out-of-pocket expense, uh, for coinsurance, uh, copays, deductibles, or the possibility of a denied flight. If you're in a work in insurance, you know that part of it. Um, membership not only covers you here locally, we also have a network of over three hundred other locations. I did provide you a folder. Uh, there's a coverage map in there that shows you your coverage. Again, I know you know it's here locally, but we're a little bit bigger than here. We are from the east coast to the west coast, Alaska, Hawaii, so we're a pretty large company. Um, what membership does, though, is it covers anyone in the household, any event they are wanting to be flown. Uh, we currently have a payroll deduction plan here with, with the city. Uh, that's the only plan that we used to offer, but, uh, the reason I'm here now is to talk about a new plan that we're offering. It's called a census plan, and with the census plan, what it does is it gives slots, um, to the city and the city remains for, I'm sorry, has ownership of the plan, so it covers any employee that is currently employed. If an employee leaves or is no longer employed, they lose the coverage, and the new employee that comes on picks up the coverage. But it not only covers employees, it covers their household, and it's an immediate coverage once they're hired. Uh, that's the way that plan works. Uh, we have had several surrounding cities and counties that have already taken part in this plan since we've been offering it. Uh, we currently have, um, Salama, Jamestown, Allard, we have Jackson County, Clay County, and Fintress County, uh, right now that have come on board in the last little bit, uh, after we've explained the plan to them. Their use of this for retention and recruitment purposes, and also to add a benefit to their employees at a, you know, a good cost. Uh, one of the things that we do get asked on this plan is what if someone already has a membership? Uh, what that means is their personal membership would pause until they're no longer employed or retired, and then once at that point, their personal membership would pick back up. If you have children in college, they're still considered part of your household. Uh, it doesn't matter the relationship, there's no age limit, uh, doesn't matter to have pre-existing health conditions, there's no qualifying health questions, it's just whoever lives at that household. Um, it's very low time, um, for HR and payroll. It's a one-time-a-year plan, uh, covers all employees. So, um, it's really a cut-and-dry plan, something that a lot of businesses and governments are looking at, again, to strengthen the benefit plan and to get employees covered at a reasonable cost. And I know the number one question that I usually get from, um, councils and executives and things like that is, what is the cost? Uh, we base that on the number of employees, and here for the city would be sixty-five dollars per employee, again, which would cover their household. Again, not asked for you, I know you've already went through your own budget plans for this year, but something to consider on next year's budget is just kind of introducing it now to the community, looking at that maybe, and hopefully consider that for your employees and the city in the future. Uh, if anyone has any questions, I would love to answer those.
Yeah, Ms. Wright, thank you for, for being here and all of that. I, I thought the council needed to hear that when you came in, that would be. So, uh, in other cities, though, are, are they picking up the first year and then the employee picks up the remainder, or is it a continuing deal, or how exactly does that work?
Uh, the city, or the county, or whichever, uh, is continuing, you provided the benefit.
So, uh, of course, we don't take any action tonight, just something that, uh, I think that, uh, I thought you might want to be thinking about, and I've invited, uh, Ms. Wright back, uh, who am I going to be saying? April, I think, or March, April.
It was in May.
May. All right, sounds about right. So, uh, so just kind of be thinking if that's in the scene that you would like to.
Oh, good question. Is it just, or is that there, can both members participate?
That's strictly up to you all.
Is that a question?
Yes, sir.
How insurance policy that the city has for its employees does that cover air and transport, do you know?
Uh, of course, you know, different health plans are different, so I, uh, we, we have Blue Cross of Wishel, we have Cigna, and we have United Healthcare, all through the state of Tennessee. So, uh, you know, I, I, I've never.
It's what they have.
Yeah, I, I've never, I've never had to cash in on one, but, I mean, perhaps if they met their deductibles, I don't, I don't, I don't, I really don't know. I, I, but they will be here, uh, they will be here, uh, the end of this month, and I will get that question and report, uh, get that answer and report back to you next month. Okay? Sure. Any other questions for Ms. Wright?
I would just like to say, that's a fantastic price for what you get if there's any people ever, and we have patients transported by air all the time, it's, it's very expensive. I mean, multiple hundred thousand dollars from here to Nashville is very common.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Item number three is Ms. Ashley Walton from Upper Cumberland Committee, registered nurse navigator, universal. Navigator, University of Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
It's a long title.
I know.
Come on up, Ms.
Thank you.
I could say come on down.
[laughing].
Ms. Wright.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, um, like Mr. Heigh said, my name is Ashley Walton, I'm a registered nurse. Um, I grew up in Roseville, and that's currently where I live, with my husband and my three kids. I'm currently working with the Community Nurse Navigator Project for the University of Tennessee School of Nursing. Some of you may remember me, um, I did work, uh, here at the Upper Cumberland Health Department for several years, so you may recognize me from there. Um, this project is a grant-funded project for the Tennessee Department of Health, I'm one of two nurses for the Upper Cumberland area. Um, my half is, I'm doing the upper half of the Upper Cumberland, and Ms. Harley Wall will be doing the lower half. You're doing a nursing assessment on the community as a whole, and my findings will point me in the direction that I need to base my interventions and help place some resources for this area. And the project's goal is to understand the barriers to regular routine immunizations across the state, and I, when I say vaccines or immunization, um, that can bring out a whole lot of feelings, um, different, different people. Um, in the last few years, we have seen a decline in regular routine vaccination rates, especially in younger children, um, particularly the age group of two- to three-year-olds. Um, when I look at that, when I say regular, I'm talking about polio, hepatitis B, what we call tetanus, measles, rubella, that type of thing. Um, well, why is this a concern? When immunization rates go down, the risk of a vaccine-inflicted disease goes up, we want to figure out what the exact cause of the decrease is, in order to know this, we need feedback from citizens of the communities of the Upper Cumberland, and also leaders of those communities. When I say barriers, I'm looking at anything that might prevent an individual from getting, um, their vaccines. It could be anything from distrust, lack of education, not wanting, um, to take their child into a doctor's office and potentially exposing them to other illnesses. Is it a lack of transportation? Um, are parents worried about possible side effects? Um, or is it the thought process that my child won't get diseases like polio because they aren't really hurt anymore? You know, polio was one of those diseases back in the day, that parents couldn't wait for a vaccine to come out for. Um, and vaccination has worked so well, that you really don't hear about it anymore. When you say polio, people think back to former President Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Um, however, polio is still very much prevalent in countries such as Pakistan and Afghanistan, and with immigration and travel, now a decrease in herd immunity is putting us at risk. In fact, on July twenty-first, there was a confirmed case of polio in Rockland, New York, in an unvaccinated young adult. This area has a higher than normal rate of individuals not being vaccinated for vaccine-inflicted diseases. A few years ago was also one of those areas that had a measles outbreak of about a hundred and fifty cases. Um, I don't want our area to experience a vaccine-inflicted disease outbreak in the upcoming years, that's the last thing that 2020's need, especially when it comes to diseases such as polio. So I'm meeting with individuals here in the Upper Cumberland, and gathering needed data. I want to hear people's true thoughts and opinions, rather than, um, that before or against vaccination, and I will use that data to make a plan, and hopefully get some interventions and resources in place to combat this growing problem. I would love to see any events or meetings, um, that you all might have coming up in the area to get the word out, or any festivals, I would love to hear anyone's comments or feedbacks, and for anyone willing to help in gathering any data and theory what they create, um, I do have surveys, I'm also just gathering any, any direct quotations, or just any input about vaccinations that guys might offer. Um, my goal is not to impede on anyone's beliefs, culture, or political stance, I want to leave the politics out of it, and I want people to be able to make their own informed, educated decisions, plus on the medical evidence and research that's already out there. I want them to know about the possible consequences of not getting vaccinated or, and help find a solution to any barriers that make accessing any type of healthcare here in the Upper Cumberland harder, besides vaccines. With vaccines aside, we have people missing other regular routine, um, checkups as well. And when I say regular routine checkups, um, colonoscopies, mammograms, that type of stuff, these can be very much life-threatening as well, and if, um, if they're caught early, they're very much treatable. Um, an example of this is, um, my mother currently has stage four coma cancer. She didn't get her colonoscopy when she was supposed to, um, the regular string, um, the colonoscopy is about the age of forty-five, she was fifty-six when she got hers, and she didn't, she only moved because her sister too was diagnosed with the same, um, cancer. Um, so, in tightening prohibitive measures, whether it be vaccination, or getting, um, our citizens, um, to know to their regular checkups, that type of thing, um, for preventing the disaster or the disease before it starts. And I just want to thank you all for taking the time, um, to have me here tonight, and as you can tell, I'm not really a public speaker, I'm a nurse, so I'm very nervous for being up here, but I do appreciate you all coming up with me, and I hope that you guys will look at me as a resource for this community as well.
Ms. Walton, uh, first, you did a good job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for being here. Uh, so, when you came and spoke to me about, I thought it was important for you to get in front of council, just to, uh, inform the general public here, and, because it caught my attention, uh, when you, you talked about it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, other than that, uh, I know that Ms. Kentford was a chamber that has certain meetings, I don't know if you have an opinion, maybe, but I, she, she meets with, uh, local businesses and folks like that, so I hope that, uh, we do have a festival coming up, called, uh, Lee.
Okay.
Uh, and again, you give Ms. Kentford, possibly get a table or booth, uh, there, and, uh, we do now, uh, movie night in the park.
Okay.
Uh, so, again, she, she can lead you in that direction as well.
So that'd be great.
But, uh, so you did a good job, so thanks, thank you for being here. Think about any questions for Ms. Walton?
I, I do, are your, um, your data that you're gathering, is that something that you think, um, area medical practices would be willing to, like, put in their waiting rooms for people to fill out? Has that, have you done that before, and is that usually received well?
This is actually a brand-new project, it just started in June, so we're kind of developing as it goes, so I kind of don't want anybody's input. Um, and some of the things that I found is that I'm kind of having a hard time, um, getting in with some of the local doctor's offices, um, because one of the barriers that I'm already finding is, um, people have the opinion that parents are not vaccinated or not, but I fully favor grandparents, and every child deserves to know, you know, how the education is out there for them, and not just assume that that's going to be the way that it is.
I think, uh, I think that that would be a way, I can't speak for other doctors, but you probably get a lot of, uh, response that way, uh, and also, I'd ask the hospital if you can put that in their waiting room.
Okay.
It's a, you know, anonymous questionnaire that can help you gather, gather data, they may be willing to do that, because we certainly are fighting that uphill battle against, uh, in the last two years.
Yes, and it's.
Suspicion, most of misinformation, things like that.
Right, and also, I find it too that this area sometimes, um, for the resources and stuff, we have other people coming in and stuff too, and, um, I found out this, this past, um, wait, that Putnam County alone has ten homeless camps, ten, and just, um, maybe even addressing some of these problems and giving them access to care, may be an area that we could get to, so if you have any ideas or suggestions, um, once I get through all this side collection, um, I want to, there's, I want to file my interventions and maybe hopefully find some resources and use some of that grant money for good for us around this area. Any other questions?
Thank you, time for board to do it. Okay, thank you very, very much, and, uh, again, Shannon, if you could, please, uh, make a miss, Ms. Walton, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Have a safe trip back to Pickett County.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, item number four is employee agreements, I, I, due to, uh, some situations that we had with the city of Livingston, I, I talked to, uh, some of the, for all the supervisors, we about possibly having agreements, uh, with city employees that how, uh, that are certified in certain, in their particular field, uh, for example, uh, folks that, uh, we have, uh, allowed them to get their CDLs while they work for the city, or, uh, we've sent them to the police academy, uh, they are certified policemen or firemen, uh, help them get their licenses, whether it's in water treatment, and codes, and wastewater, uh, and what we have, what we have seen, unfortunately, uh, as of late, uh, with the market, the way it is, uh, in the private sector, is that we have trained, um, some of these folks with CDLs, uh, only to get swooped up by the private sector and, uh, would pay. So, I, I've talked, reached out to our attorney, Mr. Dan Rager, and asked him if this was something out of the ordinary, and he said absolutely not. In fact, I think that he said that he had done this for, uh, other cities, it's in your packet, uh, you, we don't have to, uh, we can take this under advisement tonight, or we can act on it tonight, uh, but you've had an opportunity to look at, and basically, that the city of Livingston pays for you to be a certified policeman, certified fireman, or assist you in getting your, uh, commercial driving license, uh, and you get them, and you leave the next day, uh, then it's going to be prorated back, and the city will get a little of the money back, uh, and that's what it's all about. I'll turn it over to Ms. Rager.
Yeah, and there's any number of ways that you can do it, Mayor, what we did in, um, the city of Augu just had to pass an ordinance like this, they were having the exact same problem that you guys are having, which is, you're, you know, some of the more affluent communities, uh, and certainly some of the more affluent private sector, they will not hire somebody who doesn't have a CDL, um, so somebody will come to a smaller community, you all will pay for them to get that training, and then they will immediately go get that higher-paid job. Um, we've seen it a lot in other communities with the police department, Chief Smith may be able to talk about that, uh, experience if you had it here in Livingston, but, um, it's exactly what the mayor's talking about, people are getting that training at your expense, and then leaving and going to either a higher-paid community or private sector. So what we did in Augu was twenty-four months, it's prorated, if you work six months, then you only owe seventy-five percent of the total back, if you work twelve months, you only owe fifty percent back. We prorate it per full month that you work, and that's what we've written up for you here, is essentially exactly what we did in Augu, uh, but you can do it any way you want to, you can do it over a shorter or longer period of time, you can do forgiveness if certain things happen, it's just kind of up to you from a poly, policy perspective as to how you want to do it, and we're glad to help any way that we can.
You said the supervisor will go on board with this? Yes, um, they know, uh, and this is, again, coming down the back, uh, as Jack Parrot's here with us, and, uh, of course, Ray is here as well, uh, these, uh, uh, jobs that are mandated by the state of Tennessee to have certain certifications, running water treatment plant, wastewater plant, policeman, fire, codes, and CDLs. Obviously, you got to have CDLs, uh, with the city of Livingston to be able to drive the trucks, uh, any of the, uh, commercial trucks that involve CDLs, uh, so, what we, what we've had is, over the years, uh, when folks retire, uh, they take their CDLs with them, and so we have hired, uh, other employees, new employees, and have got them trained and through the program, and got their CDLs, and less than six months, uh, they've switched other employee opportunities, so we just kind of put the brakes on doing any training right now with CDLs, uh, because I wanted to talk with the board, see how they felt about that. So, in essence, it just simply means that if we train someone, uh, and we have money in this profession, uh, and an employee does want to leave, they can leave, uh, we just want to make sure we get our money back prorated, that's it. Uh, if they want to leave, good for them, and we wish them the best, but at the same time, if we just send them to the school, and, and the private sector or another entity just came along, uh, we just don't think it's, I just don't think it's right, uh, to be just training rounds.
On average, how much money do we usually have, somebody, give them training, whatever field they're?
Well, it depends on what kind of, what field you're in. In, in the police department, uh, at the end of the day, Ray, uh, what, about ten thousand? Yes, sir. Uh, about ten thousand, and a policeman's going to be about the same in the fire department, and you start just getting all of your certifications that you need, uh, CDLs, uh, getting someone trained, uh, uh, you know, could, could range up to about, uh, five hundred to a thousand dollars if you didn't train them, but the main thing is, is important for us to have, uh, with the water department, the gas department, the street department, we got to have people around the trucks. Uh, and, uh, so, but, uh, water treatment plant, uh, operators, we're, we've got some in schools, uh, I think last week, right, uh, and I know that Danny's got some in schools and, and sessions as well, trying to get these folks certified that is mandated by the state of Tennessee. Uh, the issue that you, you got is, is, uh, it's a, uh, right now, it's an employee's work, uh, for instance, uh, it's, uh, folks can kind of name their costs, if you, you know, right now, I've got, uh, one certified wastewater plant operator, this is from Charlotte, uh, Danny, if you wanted to shout out, then, uh, you know, right now, I don't know what we do, uh, and Doug, we've talked, and he's not leaving anytime soon, but, uh, at one time, we had, uh, five certified water, water treatment plant operators, uh, down at the water treatment plant, now we have three. Uh, so, and the CDLs, we continue to lose the folks in the CDLs, and of course, CDLs were, uh, today, for instance, uh, coming on off holiday, and we have two garbage trucks, uh, running this, two CDL drivers, okay? Uh, and so, it's, it's just, it's really a bit of a problem. Again, I'm not trying to punish an employee for, uh, taking another decision, I understand that, but if we've invested, uh, some money, uh, then, I'm just trying to get back, that's it, because we're going to turn around and train someone else.
And they're asked to sign the agreement on the front end, so they know that they're making that commitment, and if they choose not to do that, they don't have to, they don't have to go through the training, it's not like you're ambushin' them out of the back with that information.
Yeah. So this would only be for the folks that are starting training from this point going forward, so if they just graduated six months ago, they're not bound by this.
That's right, it's just going forward, you can't hardly do that to anybody, that's unfair.
And it's not a contract for employment, it is only a contract for the course itself.
That's right. Essentially, if you leave anytime, two years after the completion of the course, you'll repay part of the training costs, and, and, you know, you don't want to get into a dispute with these folks, but you might have to turn it over to collections or something if they don't voluntarily pay, um, we're not going to go take anybody's house or anything like that if they can't afford to pay. It's really to make the employees think twice, okay, I'm going to go do this training, they say, yeah.
Really just to make somebody think twice about going through the training, they know it's going to cost you money, and then turn it around and take in another job, and if
they know it on the front end, they signed on the front end, they know they bear that cost, um, and, and again, the city's not going to go after somebody and try to take their house or do something to them, but you might put it with a collection agency or something if you had to, if somebody just refused to pay you back, but it's just like any other debt that you're owed on a water bill or something else like that. Some of it's more, some of it's less, ten thousand's a lot of money for the police department, but, you know, five hundred dollars CDL, if they work for you for a year, it's not that big a deal.
I have a question. When you consider the, the cost of the education, um, they're on, they're, they're on the payroll, they're basically on the clock, when they're going and doing this training course, so it's more than just the five hundred dollar cost of the course?
That's right.
Because you're paying them to go to the course.
That's right.
So would that be included in the cost of training when you answered that?
Yes, sir.
When you answered that and said it's, uh, about ten thousand dollars to train somebody, would that be included?
Yeah, so, in, in, in that case, uh, Tennessee Law and Enforcement Training Academy provides housing, uh, but in some of the cases, uh, for instance, if someone has a test at eight o'clock in the morning, then yes, we will pay for their room and board, pay for the test, uh, pay for a meal, uh, and, uh, and that's what we're getting at, is we've got an investment, uh, in that employee, and just trying to recoup some of the money back.
There are limits, Dr. Clough, I'll claw back salary, you can't just claw back everybody's salary at zero, but you can recover the room and board costs and the tuition costs, and maybe even some mileage or some other, overtime, things like that.
Right, I just wondered if, uh, we, if we had any time to do this, if we should specify what the cost of training are, so that's understood from the get-go.
And we should do that, and the way that I wrote it, of course, you've got all these different kinds of trainings, and so it's very generic, but if you guys pass this, we'll, we'll pass this. and so it's very generic, but if you guys pass this, we'll, we'll, that's the city will itemize that on the front end for the employees, so they know exactly what their experience is.
And if we pass the first reading, then I'll be able to call the department heads and see exactly as close as I can get to the expense that it would cost for the CDLs and employees to take the talk around sessions or take the tests or stay, all those things that are involved.
And you, of course, you don't put the exact amount of the ordinance, because it's going to fluctuate, but you can, you'll give a sheet to the employees before they sign, this is what the estimated cost will be, and then you're responsible for the actual cost if they fail the test, have to take it twice or something like that, so, which happens.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. Thank you. Zoom one, make a motion, yeah. And we'll come back with, I think, Karen O'Neil, and I'll be able, like I said, the class coming back around to that. The goal is not to hurt anybody in shape or fashion. Do you have some emotion?
I'll make a motion, because I know what the city's going through. And I really think some of these people are really...
Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender. Second. Second by Alderman Rexdale. Any discussion? Brokaw, what is this?
House Mayor Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Lambert.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Clutt.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number five is water line survey, which is ready to be, today, Mr. Ray Jolly is here with us tonight. I'd be serious.
Hand it out.
Well, the EPA is wanting all the water utilities to survey the customers and see what kind of service lines they have, their house or their business. They want to know if it's lead or evaporized metal or plastic. So we really hope all our customers will fill out the survey, and we've made it super simple. You just get on our website, which is cityoflivingston.net, and there's a picture of a playground at Central Park, and right under it, you can look it up, and it says, click here to take our water questionnaire.
So if you remember, we had a gentleman here from TEC, I guess six months ago, of course, Jack Parrot's here with us now with the water treatment plant, and these are just simple questions, and the way we're trying to attack this is first by website, and you can see, was this building constructed before 1988? And you'll answer that. What is the service line construction? But they're just simple questions, won't take just a minute. Anyone that does not have access to the internet can come into City Hall. We will have these ready and available for anyone to come in. Five minutes, right, Cherry? Three minutes, maybe?
Yeah.
Certainly will take you on the drive from your residence to get here to do this, but I think it's, what's the timeframe, Jack? Do you remember?
October 15, 2023.
So we've got about 5,000 water customers, so it's going to, we hope we get a major response from this. You'll hear me talking about it the next couple of months, about this survey. And if this, if your home or your business was constructed before 1988, and you click yes or no, one of them...
If you believe that it was constructed after 1988, then you're done. You don't even have to answer anything else.
Okay. So, yeah, so if it's constructed, you say before or after, Cherry?
It's after.
After.
After 1988, then it's, then it's the one question survey, so.
Could that one question be put on the return part of the water bill on the backside or something, and let the police answer that? And then you know who to let you follow up with or not? I'll get it out to everybody.
That, that, that's an idea, that to be another way that we attack this. If we get into fourth quarter and no one is responding, then I'll talk to the police department, and we'll be going door to door, trying to get these surveyed. And this is a requirement from the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation, AKA also Environmental Protection Agency, EPA. So that's where we are, and that's how serious they are about getting this done. And so we're taking the first step, and hopefully we'll have a lot of folks that will just jump online or come down to City Hall and fill out the survey. Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Item number six is a garbage truck bid we got. As you know, we budgeted roughly $200,000 for a new garbage truck of the City of Livingston, and if we approve this bid tonight, which is on the state bid, and the state bid just means that you don't have to bid out, the State of Tennessee has done their bidding for you, okay? So you have the procurement policy from the State of Tennessee in your packets. We are looking at a international, which is on the state bid. You can see that the international kind chassis has got, and the whole nine, you can see all the specs, it's all in there, so. So if you recall, we, we're not going to give this, if we approve it tonight, you're not going to give the truck for 12 months, 10 months at the earliest, which will put us in the next fiscal year. So if you remember, we talked about perhaps having a little extra money for the SROs coming out of that, so that's pretty safe in doing that, so.
Is it $210,000?
Yeah.
Because the price on each got $203,000?
Did I? I might have missed.
It's got a nice, it's priced $203,000.
Which is a place to... Yeah, $203,000, sorry. Actually, it's, I usually wrap it up $204,000, it's $203,467.96.
Is this a recommendation from the mayor of the city that we do a lot of crap about it on the ground?
Well, this is a garbage truck. And yes, this is a recommendation from me and the supervisor in the street department, yes.
Is this 2024?
It is.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Yes. So.
Motion good, Ray?
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson to approve this state bid on the garbage truck. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bill Lender. Any discussion? Brokaw, what is this?
Alderman Elder.
Yes.
Alderman Lambert.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Clutt.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
House Mayor Dawson.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Motion passed. We'll put the order in. Item number seven, appoint Bruce Elder to the planning commission to replace John Cluth, as recommended by John Cluth. That's a one of them. It's a motion by John Cluth, second by Vice Mayor Dodson. Any discussion?
Maybe.
Our fourth motion, let it know the same.
Aye.
All the polls like sign, motion passed. Congratulations, Mr. Elder, with make sure that Mr. Tom Lee gives you the proper training that you need now in the planning commission. Our fellow thank you for serving the planning commission.
My pleasure.
Also, item number eight is Christmas decor. We took a look at our Christmas ornaments that we have on the poles on Main Streets up and down, and they've just deteriorated. I mean, we just can't hardly use them anymore. And to upgrade here, I had Mr. Jennifer Offser take a look at the placing these, and you can see it came up with a price of $96.0190. Now, we'll give some more quotes, as close as we can, but it's hard to imagine that we're in September, we're talking about Christmas, but if we, we need to get those ordered, if that's what the council wants to do.
Motion referred up to the end there.
Motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Cluth. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. Did we buy ornaments last year? Was that for the big trees and trees in the garbage truck?
Yeah, we've lost, we've lost some ornaments to go around the square. I don't remember exactly what it is. Yes, we do.
And I think the New Year tree, home, was in last year's as well. All our homes, lots of random buildings on the square. Is that, was, is that downtown, through my legislation, or...
There's several of those out in Christmas, we'll get them.
Yeah, Christian actually takes care of that. We, the last time I think we done anything to them, make sure they saw them, probably Kelly Cross, it was probably down, it may be a break in shop, but I'll, I'll make it up. All right, we got a motion and a second. Any more discussion about Christmas decor? Okay. All in favor of the motion, let it know the same.
Aye.
All the polls like sign? Motion passed. Item number nine is hire the city attorney. So we turn this over to our city attorney to put out the specs with, and he did, and we got one applicant that was interested in being city attorney, Mr. Andre Greppen. Andre has done work with the City of Livingston before. He is out of the office of Moore, Rader, Fitzpatrick, Fitzpatrick, and York. All right? So, and again, it was advertised, Dan Rader can tell you more, but this is the only applicant we have that would like to have a job. I'd say it's a good job, I recommend it.
So, as you all recall, in August, for those of you who are here, at the August meeting, we, you all voted to advertise this, and we did. We sent it to them, passed, they posted it on their website, as well as their Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn pages. In addition, we sent it to the Tennessee Municipal Attorneys Association, which is the association that all of the municipal attorneys in the state are part of, and they sent a blast email to all the municipal lawyers. Unfortunately, you know, as August was drawing near, we found that there really hadn't many applicants, know that Mayor Hayes did reach out to one local lawyer who was certainly extremely qualified, who declined to apply. Of course, Overton County is part of the 13th Judicial District in the seven counties in the area, and we're a small community as far as lawyers go, and we all practice a lot in these counties. So I suspect every lawyer in the area knew that your former city attorney, John Meadows, had been elected judge in White County, because we're all going to practice in front of now Judge Meadows. And so that's been known for several months, and it's understanding you all have had a lot of other interests. I am not disinterested, because I am very proud to have Andre Greppen as my law partner. He's a very good lawyer, he's done a very good job with us. He graduated from the University of Alabama, is extremely smart, and has worked on some of your cases and done a really, really good job. He is the city attorney for the City of Carthage, also does a lot of work for the City of Cookfield, the City of Allgood. Our other law partner, Randy York, who's a former district attorney for this district, was just appointed as the city attorney for Crossville. And so if you do select Mr. Greppen, you get the benefit of our entire firm and all of those lawyers, should there ever be a situation in Livingston that requires any additional assistance, and certainly we all work as backups for each other. When I accepted this job on an interim basis and agreed to do it, I said that I would not apply on a permanent basis, because I didn't want anybody to think that I was trying to get my foot in the door. So I'm a little embarrassed that there haven't been any other applicants besides Mr. Greppen, but he's an excellent one, and you'll, you'll have an excellent attorney if you should select him. If you want to advertise longer, it will not hurt our feelings at all. You did advertise basically for the month of August through the first of September, and you're welcome to do that longer, and of course, I'm glad to continue to assist you on an interim basis if you want to do that. There's no pressure from us to select anybody tonight, but Mr. Greppen will do an excellent job for you, and I could certainly vouch for that.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. And Mr. Rader has done this a top-notch job in the short, short time that he has been here. But we did advertise, and I, I, you know, I hope to be redundant in what Danny said. Everybody's had an opportunity to, everybody knew that John was leaving, and it's not really been a series.
So this would be at an hourly rate in this round? Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I move to the higher Mr. Greppen.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Cluth to hire Mr. Andre Greppen, second by Vice Mayor Dodson. Any discussion? Brokaw, what is this?
Alderman Lambert.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Clutt.
Yes.
Alderman Dale.
Yes.
House Mayor Dawson.
Yes.
Alderman Elder.
Yes, go waddle.
I went to UT, too. That's his first meeting, too, is being praised, anyway. The motion passed. Congratulations, Mr. Greppen.
Thank you very much.
To working with you. I'm sure that anything that Mr. Rader has, he will pass over to you. And again, Danny, I want to thank you for helping us in a time that we needed help. Our attorney was elected to judge in White County, and certainly we miss you, but we wish you the best, and you've done us a good job, so.
I appreciate it. It's always a real pleasure to work with the City of Livingston on the public and the department's cases. I've really enjoyed getting to know all of you all a little closer the last month, and if you ever need anything, you know where to find me, I'll let her throw my pack up with us.
Thank you. Appreciate that comment, so. Andre, we look forward to working with you.
Look forward to it as well. Thank you, Mayor.
And normally, I think Mr. Rader's probably told you this, we normally meet on the first Monday of every month.
Correct.
Given the fact that it was holiday, and it fell Tuesday.
That's right.
Okay, thank you. All right, item number 10 is for, if you remember, we had a letter from TEC that says that we could no longer burn inside the corporate limits of Houston. They are not going to give us a permit to burn anymore now. But also, when the Michael Verstappen came through Livingston a couple of months ago, we went under a state of emergency, and then that allowed us to get a permit from the City of Central Environmental Conservation, burning out at the county quarry. Now, that ends in October. So we needed a chipper, so, because we're going to be doing a lot of chipper. And so advertise, well, excuse me, Vermeer Heartland... so, uh, advertise, well, excuse me, uh, Vermeer Heartland Incorporated, uh, which we are a member of the National Joint Power Alliance, uh, which is also Source Wealth, which again, they're kind of like state bids, they do a bidding course, and we just need to approve the purchase of a sixty-eight thousand dollar chipper. It'll be a Vermeer chipper. Yes.
Motion to bring the sixty-eight thousand dollar chipper?
There is a motion by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson.
You said it wasn't a vote.
Yes. Okay, second, uh, by Alderman Rexdale, any discussion? All for the motion, let know to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion passed. Item number eleven, L P D report, Mr. Ray Smith.
You can board, man. Uh, to kind of give you an update on, uh, everything that's been happening in that police department, keep everybody, uh, apprised of something going on. Uh, the last time I reported to you, uh, we had over seven hundred articles that we had, uh, went through and, and took care of, and got orders to get destroyed, and we destroyed those items. We are now working on a property, property is just the other side of the coin that's gathered up in, in the room there that we're working on. It has to look just a little bit longer, because we've got to slow down and make sure to get a lot more things, documentation, things that we have to go back, and they can be destroyed or given back, that's what our goals are, is to give back any of that, uh, items that we could. Of course, it's going to take the clearance of the, uh, judicial community to make sure everything's okay through, uh, the DA's office. Uh, we have took on other cases, other things took place, we are powered backup, like about two more officers to be fully staffed, and I am totally agree, it's with having a contract with men that come to work, if you would, I brought in all the certifications that define City of Livingston, it's paid for, I got two big binders, so I, there's a lot invested in, in officer recruitment, and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate the guys that come up and stand up and want to be a part of our department, and young guys that do want to come in, it does cost right around ten thousand dollars to send a young man or a young lady to school for the schooling, we pay them, we give them transportation, uh, the food, they feed them, we even clothe them, and we're probably one of the entities that's pretty expensive to have and to get trained on, it is a professional job that we, that we have, professional people working in there, so it does, your schooling just make it one time around. When I first got started, I was schooled for three years, and it continues, and you don't never get stopped, because every year we got to be recertified again, and it takes time and money to recertify all the officers that we have on staff, and that's even through dispatch and through our secretary of areas there. But we're proud, we're looking like about two more, and we'll have the patrol position all back up and powered back up. We are looking at another S R O, uh, unfortunately, we're probably going to lose an S R O, those are very important folks that work in the schools, we have to keep these at the school and keep safety there, they do a lot of things, also they are bothering classes and all those that, uh, we also have a grant that, uh, the mayor and I have been looking at, and we have been, unfortunately, to be awarded a grant money on the situation to get cars for the police department, and some construction take place, and some other things that the mayor has, uh, looked in for the benefit of the city of Livingston. That's all we have this time, as far as income of the city of anything's going on.
Yeah. You don't have anything else?
Oh, yes, uh, I also wanted to, uh, ask to hire, uh, a gentleman, his name is Shane Barlow, to come and work with the city of Livingston at this time for the Livingston City Police Department. He is a certified officer of nine years.
And I, I need to make a disclosure here that, uh, Mr. Barlow, he is my brother-in-law, uh, he did not come to me seeking a job, he went to Ray Smith, and Ray had no idea he was my brother-in-law, but I wanted to disclose that, and, uh, I talked to Ray about it, Ray wanted to, to move forward with it, and, uh, I told him that we would bring it to the board, so that's. Is that, am I telling?
That's true, uh, he has nine years' experience, he's worked the road before, there were a little less training to put a gentleman on the road that is already certified and ready to go to work than it is to take a gentleman up and spend that kind of money and start all over again. When you have that opportunity, it sure relaxes things, I mean, right now, we got young people riding this, having to ride with other certified officers waiting to go to school. If I have a gentleman that I can put on the road, that means that we're not like doubled up, we can actually cut more hair and ensure more calls for the safe environment for Livingston City. But he's met offer qualifications.
Will he fill one of the two open spots?
Seven.
Will he fill one of the two open spots?
He will fill, no, that's still leaving two, yes.
I will make a motion to hire, Mr. Barlow.
Motion made by Alderman Rexdale, second by Alderman Dale, the mayor, any discussion? Broke all votes, uh, please, Phil.
Alderman Leonard?
Yes.
Alderman Allen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dodson?
Yes, yes.
Alderman Dale?
Yes.
Alderman Club?
Yes.
Alderman Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed, uh, you have anything else, Mr. Ray?
I have worked with the greater law firm, and they're fine and billable, and they're always great professionals to work with.
Yes, sir. All right.
We got this question, how many officers do you have now?
There's the two, we have eight, uh, eight, eight that work the street. We have SROs, and we also have some more security, but hospital.
I'd just like to make a, a comment and, and ask you a question as well, Chief. We all, Alderman, received, um, some correspondence back from Mr. Ray suggesting that some of the things that we've all been through over the last several months be used as an opportunity for, um, new training, retraining, and as you think about the people that you, you have, do you, have you thought of any specific things that you think, um, in that area as far as training and retraining, um, in the, in the coming months that would be advisable?
We are looking at different areas now, law enforcement's changed, back when I got started, but a lot of things has changed, we have, we've got to be a little more open-minded about other ways to handle things, and the way to look at stuff is not always just cut and dry, through training and all, we can find a better way to deal with a lot of other systems and situations and events that'd be a lot less likely to turn into something that we do not want to happen. Uh, we have, we, we looked at a lot of other training that's been advised through M Task, and we are taking all that unadvisement, and am, are standing up and going into new training areas. And that training area comes with having to certify that person to be the trainer for the police department, which does cost to get those certifications, or you pay for an instructor to come, which can cost you more, but it's the training that we have that's looked upon to change things and to look better upon it, and make sure we're more thorough we are.
Uh, because, uh, most every professional organization has requirements for retraining, reminding, going through things again, um, and I think we don't have anything really formalized like that with the police department, but a- as we learn more about what's available, um, I just think, uh, I just throw my opinion, and I think that's a, a really good thing to do in light of what we've all learned about things that could have and should have maybe been done differently, um, that we have a, um, specified plan sometime in not-too-distant future to have, uh, training, and I don't want to use the word recertification, but some sort of ongoing training that are, that all of our, uh, employees at the police department can benefit from.
So, uh, excuse me, uh, so one thing that, that they, that is mandated, that all officers have in-service training, uh, how many hours is it?
Forty hours.
So they have forty hours of in-service training.
Per year?
Per year, yes, and, uh, there's, in this in-service training, uh, it could be domestics, uh, it could be drug hunting, uh, it could be, uh, she, you know, range work.
Evidence handling.
Evidence handling and things like that, but there's also specialty schools, uh, that, uh, Mr. Barton, uh, talked to everyone about, uh, that if, if, uh, and I think, I'm not trying to put words in, uh, Ray's mouth here, but I think Ray is trying to get back up full strength, uh, to work, he can send some of these officers to, uh, right now, I mean, uh, like other forms, you see, he is having a little weekends and late nights and things, that nature get it, I understand, but, uh, it's because of kind of short-handed right now, but, but yes, I'm, I'm for that one hundred percent, Ray and I's talking about that, uh, uh, and, and, uh, to get extra training in these areas, and so when we do in-service training, uh, Ray, where would we go for in-service training?
We're allowed to do in-service training in our own department, but the training send and have instructors to come in and do the training for us in ten class, it's not a give-me class, it's a pass-and-fail, this is a test that is, you're tested upon your knowledge of whatever the training is, and you take the test, you don't pass the knowledge test, you're, you might have to go back and take it over again, or set it to the class. Usually it was a give, a lot of things were a give-class, and they're not that way anymore, but they're not, you really have to pass, because liability's passed behind that person of anything that goes on, and any training that comes up short, we're liable for it. So the more knowledge we place in the officer, the more knowledge we put out there on the street, the better decisions we're going to make from this moment forth, at every, every event that we take on.
And, and given the past, I would, I would think, Ray, that some of our in-service training is going to be, uh, focused on, uh, how to handle evidence, uh, drill seizures and things like that.
Yes, all these new updates, or all these concerns that we've had years, all the training that will take place.
Thank you. Any other questions?
How many officers do you have to stand for training?
All have to go.
Well, I understand that, but I'm talking your new officers.
Can you push that a little bit, please?
Your new officers.
I have got six at this time that I have to go over training. And if we can't fill the positions with trained officers or certified officers, that'd be that close. And unfortunately, in the world that we live in today, there aren't many folks that wants to be in law enforcement or any emergency services whatsoever anymore, it's a, they can choose, if you didn't have it in your heart years ago, and want to be that, everybody wanted to be a police officer, I was some years ago, we don't have a stack of, of applications, we just don't, you get one or two, or you get, unfortunately, or you get somebody that nobody else wants, and we don't want that, it lives to, we don't scream, make sure we get the best availability for Livingston City and the people of Livingston citizens, we want things like solid decisions, to be well-trained and pick the best of the best and, and just, we don't have a lot that wants to be in law enforcement anymore, it's a very hard area to be in right now.
Tough job.
It is tough job.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Item, item number twelve, uh, is, uh, law for business that you have in front of you from, uh, for, uh, parks, uh, my recommendation is to take the, uh, full older service, eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-six and seventy-five, that is a little bit higher, uh, than track for me by almost ninety-seven dollars, but this is a local business, uh, and.
Is that a question?
Yeah.
Always a little.
Uh, motion made by Alderman Bill Linder, second by Vice Mayor Ken Dodson, any discussion? All for the motion, let know to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like a sign, motion passed. Uh, so, uh, any public comments, uh, right back to the rest of the council? Okay, here and then, and it's ended the motion to a term. Well, hold on, Mr. Man, also, uh, we've got, have a seat up there just a bit. Uh, so there, there, there is going to be some, uh, work sessions, uh, coming up in October to talk about some of the things, uh, that, uh, that the board has discussed in the, in, in some of the last three or four months of the, the agenda that will, that we talk about the pay scale, uh, we talk about, uh, compensation, I think, is, uh, for board members, uh, all those things are charter, uh, changes that will need to be done, uh, so I, I encourage each and every one of you, uh, to read your, your charter, make some notes, uh, on any changes that might need to be made, uh.
Mr. Mayor, you said I would be able to speak, so how about not talking about adjournments?
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Daniel, okay. Uh, so, uh, any, anything that, uh, that you would like to see, uh, possibly change in there, yeah?
Can we get that sent to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we will, I'll get that to you, return apologies for not getting to you already. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Ray, do you have anything you'd like to say in that?
I just think, I don't volunteer, Mr. Greppin, some of this, but I'd be willing to help with this since I've talked with you guys about it, uh, we're glad to go through the charter too, and make some suggestions as far as updates and some things to address, um, particularly this issue with the alderman pay, um, and, you know, as we've looked at, the charter, uh, has a provision that says no alderman pay, turns out that back in two thousand five, I think it was, the prior mayor and the prior council had passed an ordinance to, um, to pay the alderman a small sum for their services, a thankless job, uh, as I'm sure you all have, uh, figured out, uh, but to pay a small sum, and that ordinance cannot override the charter, um, but, uh, there's a longstanding presumption here in Tennessee, and the Tennessee Supreme Court has explained it repeatedly, that, um, legislative bodies are presumed to have acted in good faith and not to intentionally pass something that is, that is violated of, uh, the general law or a charter provision, um, and so that's obviously what, uh, we believe has happened here, uh, you all certainly had nothing to do with passing that provision, and the fact that some of you all have, uh, received some of that money, um, is, uh, it's unfortunate that the charter didn't allow that, and you all didn't realize that, um, but you're presumed to act in good faith, and it's my opinion, and I've written a detailed legal written opinion about this, uh, uh, when this issue came to light, um, you all would not be obligated to repay that money that you received because you did act in good faith that it was a prior council, prior mayor that passed that ordinance, um, so I would just comment on that, uh, but other than that, as far as making some updates to the charter, you, you've got a, a good charter as far as your form of government, but there are some things that you can bring up to date, um, and that would be one of them. I think this is, your charter says no alderman compensation, and I think it's the only community that I know of, uh, that doesn't at least have some, uh, appreciative compensation for the, for the alderman, I don't think that any amount of money is, um, enough for the, uh, um, burden that you all carry, but, um, you all certainly deserve something, and I think every other community that I've worked with or seen their charters, uh, had some provision where the aldermen were compensated at least some amount of money for their time in trouble. I answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Uh, well, I'll get them to you, yes, okay. Mr. Man, I did ask if anybody would like to have any public comments, but you can come on up now, sir, if you'd like.
Okay. We're on the air. Okay, good evening, uh, gentlemen. I want to start off where we, where I left off at the August first meeting concerning interim, interim Livingston Police Department Chief Ray Smith's animal cruelty and lack of rabies vaccinations and tax for two dogs. We had the mayor reading something that I could not hear, which turned out to be a letter resulting from a staged, last-minute propaganda operation conducted by the sheriff at Ray Smith's invitation at his residence regarding the chocolate lavender, with no mention of the boxer that was rumored to have been put down to negative date for another dead pig. The only reason Ray Smith took the dog for rabies vaccination on a dog's first birthday, even though the rabies vaccinations are required at three months of age, was because he was facing elbow criminal misdemeanors for animal cruelty and lack of rabies vax. As Paul Harvey used to say, and now for the rest of history, one- As Paul Harvey used to say, and now for the rest of history, on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, I was personally talking to the sheriff at his office about Ray Smith's cruelty to animals and wanted him to check it out, but he refused, so I went back to the mayor, which resulted in the boxer also being removed from the pen at the vacant lot. No one lives there. After I spoke at the August first council meeting, Ray Smith was next with evidence room inventory update. Upon finishing that, he was asked to speak to the dog issue, and I must compliment him on that presentation, I will never deny any violations of Tennessee animal protection laws or rabies vaccination laws. What we have here is that L P D interim police chief Ray Smith knowingly violating Tennessee animal protection laws and rabies vaccination laws with Mayor Hayes and Sheriff Garrett doing everything they can to protect Ray Smith while ignoring the laws and their duties. I think it can be reliably said that the three of them, Ray Smith, Mayor Hayes and Sheriff Garrett are partners in crime violating their host of office with Mayor Hayes directly being on a billboard as the third to go, and I don't have any more to say about this. You people let it go by and didn't do nothing, and that's the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Mr. Mananiel. Is anyone else on the wrist, uh, board? If not, uh, we will.
Good morning, the over.
Motion made, uh, by this man, he announced their second, second, Alderman Bill Linder, in discussion.
Okay.
All for the motion, let it know the same eye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, we're adjourned.